Okay, you are ready to go.
Good afternoon. This is a special meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, April 28th, 3:00 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference. We're going to do a roll call vote. Councilmember McPherson.
I am here.
Councilmember Hiller.
Here.
Councilmember Addis.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
I'm here.
We do have a quorum of council members. I will call the meeting to order. I'm going to begin with public comment. Going to read the participants from the agenda. Information regarding public comment. Pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020, this meeting is going to be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Cable Channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for the meeting. Alternatively, members of the public may watch the meeting and speak on a specific agenda item by logging into the Zoom webinar at the beginning of the meeting using the information provided on the front of the agenda. Please use the raise hand feature to indicate your desire to provide public information or comments. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to provide their input, and the clerk will notify you when that three minutes is up. Thank you for that, and welcome. With that, I will open up public comment. AGP, do we have any public comment members? From the public.
Yes, sir. Just a moment.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hill, can you hear us?
Welcome, Mr. Hill. Phil, are you there? Phil Hill?
Okay, Mr. Hill?
Here I am. I was muted.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
Now I'm back on your page. I want to alert you.
Go ahead, Phil.
As a visitor, as a guest, I was not able to activate it. I just got moved to your page, and now I can speak. Okay, so Phil Hill, I am a Morro Bay Level Board for a little less than 20 years. I spoke to you at the last public city council meeting. I'm revisiting that. I would ask you to refer to a letter. There was an email that was sent to you and the mayor by Craig Kent, and he was at the meeting with us. It's a very, very good coverage of the meeting that we had and the reasons that we're in disagreement with these proposed fee increases. It boils down to these $30,000 that are attributed to primarily, according to Eric's account, is for enforcement. It's all boats on the water, not just us. We feel that those fees should be spread amongst all boats. We do not require more time than other boats. They're all floating on the water. They all come into jeopardy. I live at a private marina. I spend $8,000 a year for my slip, 10-foot by 34-foot. $8,000 a year, a little bit more than that. And of that money, part of it goes to the $22,000 a year that my landlords pay in lease fees. So we are paying our way. Also, I don't use in-city water, city electricity, city sewage. All of that is managed through my agreement with the leaseholder. So I'm paying my part, and he's asking for another $500 a year. I have never, in all the time I've been on the water, used Harbor Department services for anything other than getting my registration and an inspection, and that's it. So these hours, we came up with less than 10 hours on the year. I did my own interviewing, and I came up with roughly, I gave an allowance, 10 hours of time. I'm sure it's a little more than that, but nowhere near what they're asking for. So thank you for listening to me. There are many other people that wanted to be here, but they can't because they don't have access like this, and it was the immediacy of the situation, lack of Wi-Fi, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil.
Situation. I know you guys got your hands full with everything, but this is important to me. I'm of a limited income. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil, and I just wanted to mention also that the action item is also on the 5:30 regular meeting tonight. So you have another opportunity for public comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
AGP, any other public comment?
Yes, sir. Just a moment. Carol, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Welcome. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you. I'm Carol Trusdale, member of Morro Bay since 1995, and it's nice to see all of you guys. I sent this message out to Councilman Hiller earlier today, and I don't know if he received it or not, but I'm going to read it. Dear Jeff, I know that this is a very difficult time. Everyone's scared of doing their best under adverse circumstances. May I suggest all overtime frozen except under critical circumstances in Public Works, Department of Pipes, Bragage, et cetera. And would it be possible for city employees to be turned into contract labor during this time? Their benefits of health insurance would be their own expense, tax payments, the contribution to their Social Security of CalPERS would halt for the interim until they become full-time employees again. Since I'm not privy to the salaries of people, would it not be better to have them step into this interim role instead of taking a 5% cut in their salaries as all of their expenses will still roll over? These would be the administrative clerical positions within the city versus fire or police. Each individual would sign a confidentiality contract, receive a 1099 for tax perverts from the city, and invoice the city for hours' time work. I have no idea how this works out legally because of the workers' compensation laws. I do believe that the city still needs to carry out the fiscal liability. I firmly believe that the financial director runs the numbers. You'll see the overall savings to the city's budget and still keep good and qualified dedicated workers. So this is just my suggestion, and I'd be more than happy to train people if they want to go into this direction and offer my services at no cost to the city. I've done it before, and I saved my job. I was a very well-valued employee, and we ran into some hard times, and it ultimately came out a win-win for both the company and the people that we worked as independent contractors.
Thank you very much, Carol. Appreciate you taking the time to get public comment and hope that you are all well.
We are well, thank you, and cooking and baking bread, and hope you guys do well, too.
Thank you.
Bye.
AGP, thank you. AGP, do we have any other public comment?
Yes, sir. Just a moment.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Welcome, John.
Thank you very much. It's John Weiss, resident business owner in Morro Bay, 42 years. Honorable mayor and council citizens and viewers. I understand from a recent survey of businesses that most businesses' revenue are down about 75% or close, closed with zero revenue. So our pre-COVID budget showed a $900,000 general fund budget deficit, which was augmented with transfers and reserve. And so, which was, I had an attachment, but it's basically from your website. Anyway, I'm glad to see you looking at doing budget cuts, but I also am concerned that they're not going to be enough. And I'm glad to hear what budget cuts you have that would be adequate. I think the idea of selling some of the properties that you have may make sense for the interim because I think the problem is interim. And I think that the properties with sellable value that don't impact our view shed would be great opportunities for the city to capitalize on those particular properties. I want to also give a suggestion on, maybe a slightly different suggestion than Carol, which is to furlough people perhaps for a day a week or a day or two a week. I know that the state of California did that when they had budget issues, and that would be something to consider. I also wanted to comment that I would exempt police officers and firefighters. I'd also ask, has consideration been given to looking at the legal expenses? As 2 to 4 million dollars over 10 years might be saved by hiring a local attorney firm? And number four, when will the staff be able to share the new budget on the city website with the adjustments? So we can look at what it looks like, because I did look, and at least I couldn't find it. If there's a budget that's posted, I know that it's in transition, and I know you're still working on it, but it would be nice to have, even as you go, a budget that's posted on the city website. So that's all I have to say. I hope you have a great meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. I appreciate your comments. AGP, any other public comment?
Sir, we don't have any more with their hands raised, but we do have quite a few callers in there, and there are a couple people with phones. And if they want to raise their hand, they have to press star nine.
So ladies and gentlemen, if you would like to speak for public comment on your phone, please press star nine as instructed.
Here are the calls coming in. I'll send one to you.
Thank you.
Val?
Hello? Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hi. I'm business owner down on the Embarcadero, and I just happened to look at your revenue options. So I know this is not related to most of the stuff you're going to talk about, but I thought I might speak about this since you are concerned about the number of people in Morro Bay, especially that are coming in on the weekends. And I know this is going to take a long time to do this process, but I think paid parking, it's really time to start working on that, as a lot of other parking issues. I know you have a list of parking lots that you would like to charge people to park in, and I would specifically say on the Embarcadero would be the way to start. And I would obviously include the Rock Parking Lot as well. But I know you're talking about RV parking at the Rock as well as paid parking. And I think both are a really good idea and a fast way to make some money once you get it set up. I think there should be an annual fee for residents. So, and I don't know how you work that out, but an annual fee for residents and then charge the visitors to park in that parking lot. I think it would help to cut down the number of people, and I think they would park on the Embarcadero more, and of course, they'd have to pay there, too. But they'll walk out there. That walking path is so great, and people should be using it more. So every parking lot on the Embarcadero should have meters for people to pay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Val. Appreciate your comments. With that, AGP, do we have another?
Caller number...
Hello?
2732, 3737, or 2737. Are you there? 7327, caller?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, uh-huh. Welcome.
Hello, my city council. This is Dan Shelby from Morro Bay. I want to comment on the city's budget. The city's budget plan is a start towards this financial disaster the city and its businesses are feeling. With that said, there are critical components missing from the staff proposal. Number one, a hard overtime freeze with no exceptions except absolute emergency approved ultimately by the city manager. Number two, there is no estimate nor guesstimations for how much the city's portion of the CalPERS retirement will go out. This is an absolute given since every investment boat short of gold has gone way down. Without taking that into consideration, budgetary calculations will be considerably incorrect. The city's estimation of decreased interviews of 14% to 20% in 2019, 2020, and 27% to 34% in, of 27% to 34% in 2021 seem extremely underestimated to me. As the city has said in their report, it will likely take one to two years approximately to recover from this financial disaster. I would expect that there would be monthly and public updates in council meetings with actual tax receipts to further consider the state of the city's CalPERS and budget. Easily, city reserves could be exhausted in one year or less. I would expect the government to identify absolute essential government services and then to eliminate services employees not absolutely required. I consider all first responders to be absolutely essential employees, and therefore, I do not support not filling one police officer position. I also consider the city manager to be in the top rating of essential employees. Considering that city employees account for 70% to 75% of the city's budget, the city will need to more aggressively cut employee costs. For lesser ranking of essential employees, the city should be actively considering the following steps. One, slow, consider unpaid furloughs for our employees, starting at one day per week. Two, consider making essential employees, contract employees, working for a set fee with no benefits provided by the city. This has been mentioned by Carol Trusdale previously. Number three, furloughs and layoffs for non-essential employees. Or we should subcontract all services possible in order to avoid the skyrocketing costs of health insurance and pension costs. Number five, the city is relaxing substantial tax payments to businesses and organizations but questioning a 10% reduction to low-income residents. 10% is only $20 for a water sewer bill of $200. I believe the city should cut water sewer bills by 50% for those that provide proof that they have been laid off. I believe the city must definitely consider revenue sources of income like paid parking, sale and lease of properties, the cannabis dispensaries, but I don't support RV camping at Morro Rock.
Dan, your three minutes is up. Dan, your three minutes is up. Thank you so much for your comments. Thank you, Dan. AGP, next caller?
Jeremy, you're on the line.
Welcome, Jeremy.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay.
Oh, hi, Jeremiah.
Hi there. My name is Jeremiah O'Brien with the Morro Bay Commercial Fisherman's Organization, mister mayor, city council, city staff. I just want to briefly say thank you very much. I think the city's done an excellent job throughout this last couple of months here with the COVID-19 virus, situation that we find ourselves in and the world has found themselves in. But I think our city, the staff, and particularly our city manager, Scott Collins, has done an excellent job. I just wanted to say thank you all and keep up the good work, and I'll probably talk to you later on agenda.
Thank you, Jeremiah. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Thanks again.
Thank you. AGP, another caller?
No, sir. Nobody else has their hand up, except people who have already spoken.
Okay, then I will close public comment, and I will bring it back to the agenda. The agenda item is the comprehensive update on the financial impacts of COVID-19 on city finances and consideration of Rock Solid Together, the city's short-term fiscal emergency plan, and Business Assistance Program. And there are six recommendations. I'm not going to read them all, but I will go ahead and turn it over to either Ms. Callaway or Mr. Collins for comments. Thank you and presentation.
Thank you, mayor, council members, community members watching and participating on the call today. I really appreciate you all being part of this. We're calling it Rock Solid Together because ultimately, we're all in this together, whether it's business owners, community members, and the city. We're all linked together in trying to get through this very challenging and unpredictable and completely historic situation we find ourselves in. Jen Callaway is going to join me in this presentation. I think she's going to share from her screen the PowerPoint presentation that was just sent out. So bear with us for one second.
Dan, I didn't see that you shared the, enabled the screen sharing function. AGP, I think we need your assistance with allowing Jen to share her screen, please.
Okay, you should be able to do it.
Looks like we have it up now. Thank you. And Jen's going to, and I are going to trade off between slides, and she's going to drive it. So Jen, I'll just say next slide when it's the appropriate time. So as I mentioned, we are presenting today the Rock Solid Together Financial and Economic Recovery Plan that covers both the short-term fiscal emergency as well as the Community Assistance Program. Next slide, please. So just a quick glance, obviously, I don't need to go into much detail about the COVID-19 pandemic. We're all well aware of it, all the challenges implicit in it, the public health issues and the economic issue, and just sort of trying to determine when makes sense to reopen and how, and what's going to guide that, and just a lot of uncertainty around that. However, we do know some facts, and that is that San Luis Obispo County has done quite well in terms of its management of the COVID-19 health issues. We have one of the lower rates of confirmed cases and, you know, need for intensive care units, facilities, as well as ventilators, and hospital deaths. Though it's still very much an emergency we're in, and we're all fighting this together, and we appreciate all the great work of our community, of the county, and of course, our business community and the employees that work for them, who live here, who have suffered significantly. The children who aren't going to school, the parents staying home to take care of their kids and to be teachers. It's unprecedented at times, and we really appreciate all the great work everybody's doing. It is saving lives and is worth the effort, but it is quite painful. Next slide, please. So just to jump into it, we are looking at the last quarter of fiscal year 2019, 2020, which are the months of April, May, and June. We're projected to lose, according to the latest figures we have, which in a lot of ways relies on estimates and early numbers from our hotel and retail sectors, is a $2 to $3 million loss of revenue for the last part of this fiscal year. Our total general fund budget is typically around $14 to $15 million, so that gives you a sense of scale of the amount of loss. We run a range of optimistic to worst-case scenario, and you can kind of see on this presentation, we're again anywhere from about $2 to upwards of $3 million of loss. TOT is the heavy hitter, now followed by sales tax with a lot of businesses being closed. And we also project losses along property tax, recreation fees. People can't come together and play sports and do the summer activities we're anticipating and other school activities and other recreational opportunities are just sort of foreclosed to the community at this time. We have seen a slowdown in permit requests with our planning department, so a total of $2 to almost $3 million loss of revenue. The Harbor Fund, which is primarily funded through the lease sites down on the waterfront, are projecting about a $200,000 loss in revenue, coupled with $100,000 cash flow impact from deferring rent from the leaseholders down on the waterfront. I think the next slide is Jen's?
Okay, thank you. So when we look at the magnitude of losses, and I can't emphasize enough how fluid of a process this is going to be, given that there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle that are unknown and truly are estimates based on, you know, the conditions that we know today, and they're changing every day. So when we went through our mitigation measures for the rest of this year, which we had about one quarter of the year to react to this and resolve some pretty significant deficits. We know that the city council has waived their stipends through, at least this fiscal year, and they'll be revisiting that. The planning commissioners have also voluntarily waived their stipends. We have salary concessions with the city manager and directors, taking up 8% of salary. 8% salary reductions effective April, beginning of April. And our unrepresented POA and SEIU employees are taking 5% salary reductions pending council approval of the resolutions tonight, effective on May 2nd. And all that yields fairly significant savings, considering it's a few months of the year. We also have vacancy savings from positions that are currently vacant in addition to the layoff of 70-plus part-time temporary employees. Those are predominantly in our recreation department. That yields about $200,000 between the layoffs and the current vacancies. The city attorney has offered reductions in the hourly rate. It's an estimate, as those are based on, you know, amount of hours charged depending on the needs during the period. So probably coming around $10,000. We have frozen not only overtime for departments beyond public safety at this point, but pretty much all operational expenditures, unless it's a matter of, a matter of a safety need, for example, personal protective equipment or those kind of things. But all operational expenditures are pretty much frozen. There are a few exceptions for some capital projects that we're doing that are funded in non-general fund, nondiscretionary funds that wouldn't be able to be used for anything else, so those are proceeding. And then our emergency reserves, this is why, this is the exact reason why we have emergency reserves. This is the purpose of emergency reserves. We have about $3.4 million in reserves currently. And the balance of that is shown in the next graph. We ended last year at 3.8. If council recalls, we had COLAs and lump-sum payments that were previously negotiated with all three of our unions that totaled just under $200,000. We had, we approved at mid-year about $500,000 to pay off our Tier 2 and Tier 3 unfunded accrued liabilities. We'll see some savings from that in 2020, 21, in future years, but that total of $500,000. And then later tonight on the council agenda is a reimbursement from Ambosa for the purchase of Cerito Peak. So in total, that brings us to about $3.4 million in our reserves. We know that needs to last throughout the duration of this recovery. And as one of the speakers commented, we don't know what the impact of PERS will be at this point. PERS lost significant amount of revenue in their investments with the market crash. They've made some up since that time. It takes typically about two years to see that reflected in your rates, so we have not gotten any guidance at this point on what that's going to do. So we also need to be cognizant of that and keep that. we also need to be cognizant of that and keep that in the back of our minds as we move forward from them. So given our projections of using a million dollars in reserves and the other mitigation measures, we could, on an optimistic side, still be short about $50,000 and up to $800,000 this year. So we need to make up from that in either revenue enhancements, which are highly unlikely at this stage of the year, or other mitigation measures, which really probably translates either into additional layoffs of employees as we don't have much left in operational expenditures at this point with already reducing $600,000. As we move into 2020, 21, again, the three scenarios, optimistic, moderate, worst, $4 to $5 million loss in general fund revenues. We're going to say this multiple times. Very fluid projections as we don't know when we'll be reopening, what reopening will really look like at this point. And how that's going to impact all of these different revenue categories. Our TOT, we're projecting to take the biggest hit in terms of losses, anywhere from a million and a half to $2 million. All the way down through our permitting and inspection fees, engineering fees, our recreation fees, and we do expect to see some impact to property tax and sales tax. These numbers were all based on a review of our recessionary revenue trends. We looked through 2008, 2011 to see where the city came in with revenues during that period, as well as we consulted with our sales tax consultant, HDL, and ran multiple scenarios with TOT, the occupancy rates, you know, about 10%, given where we're at now, which may be a little optimistic. Hopefully not. But again, that gives us a range of 3.5 up to $5 million in revenue loss for fiscal year 2021. If you recall, we already had about a $600,000 budget deficit that we were looking at as we were approaching this budget pre-COVID. So it's a significant shortfall of revenue that we are looking to overcome. So our mitigation measures for fiscal year 2020. Again, with this being very fluid, we're going to be doing multiple budget check-ins during 2021 monthly. On a monthly basis, we'll be doing in-depth review and analysis of our revenues and expenditures, deferring expenditures on the operational side to the extent that we can and really kind of controlling our costs until we see see how the economy is doing and how we open up. These, these numbers are based on an annualized basis, even though we don't have commitments through through the entire year. In some of these cases, we needed to have kind of a full picture view. So council stipends, if they were to be waived for the entire next fiscal year, it's about $32,000. The Planning Commission would be 3,200. Our salary concessions for the City Managers and Directors, about 70,000. Our unrepresented POA and SEIU memorandums that are up for approval tonight extend through December 31st. Again, these numbers reflect a full 12-month period. So 165,000 for unrepresented, 105,000 for POA, and 111,000 for our SEIU members. Gone through and withholding our vacancies open and our part-time savings, about 100, $850,000, about 20,000 for City Attorney savings, our estimate with the hourly rate reductions and the monthly write-off of about $2,500 a month. Another 600,000 in operational savings and use of another $1 million in emergency reserves. If we do that, our remaining gap between our optimistic to worst-case scenarios, our remaining funding gap that we're looking to make up is anywhere from $630,000 to $2 million. Our estimated reserves, we'd have to fill that gap with either, again, an influx of new revenues, layoffs or other operational reductions, and/or use of additional reserves. So at the end of fiscal year 2021, under the optimistic approach, we'd have about $750,000 in reserves left. Under the worst-case scenario, we would be in a deficit of about $1.4 million. So that means we would have used all of our reserves plus be sure another $1.5 million potentially without some additional offsetting mitigation measures. So as we looked at the magnitude of these numbers and we do continue to revise them daily as we're, especially as we're going through the 2020, 21 budget cycle and determining what services are gonna look like moving forward, we've built a recovery plan about around Rock Solid Together. Business and community assistance, city government, they're all intertwined together and reliant on each other to move forward and to do so in an effective and productive, productive way. So with that, I think Scott's gonna talk about what we've done so far and some options for Council to consider with our Business and Community Assistance pillar of this program.
Yes, thank you, Jen. And to, I wanted to clarify, the, the City Attorney savings is actually $18,000 for this fiscal year and we don't have good projections on what it would be continued forward through next fiscal year. So just wanted to make sure that was corrected for the record. And thank you, Jen, for that information. And as she mentioned, there's a strong linkage between the business community and our local economy and the city. And so we have a duty in some respects to, to ensure that our, our local businesses and small businesses are able to survive as much as we're able to provide assistance and connect them through Chamber and other local resources to federal and state funding that is available. But City Council has already taken several actions or joined in with, with others on a few things. We deferred payment of transit occupancy tax collected for the months of February and March. Hoteliers and vacation rental owners have until August, I want to say 31st of this year to, to pay those funds back without experiencing any penalties or interest charges. In this essence, these are low, low-interest loans that help them stay afloat. We're waiving all penalties again for late payments. That includes for things like water and sewer. We have discontinued any disconnecting of water services during the pandemic. We've adopted, Council's adopted resolutions supporting and broadcasting what has been done at the state level regarding eviction protections and price gouging protections. The Governor has allowed small businesses to defer sales tax collections for up to one year, which again is another no-interest loan to small businesses. The city's portion of that sales tax will be deferred. There is an impact to us, of course, on a, on a fiscal basis, but it does help our local businesses. We've adopted an emergency purchasing policy that puts weight on local businesses to purchase as much as we can locally to help our local businesses and also get much-needed emergency supplies as quickly as possible. We've made our transit services free to the public. We've postponed collection of delinquent garbage accounts and launched the Moro Bay Cares Program, which aligns, you know, some of our emergency services to those most vulnerable in their homes and launched a volunteer program to help connect some of our seniors who, with the Are You OK Program where they get daily calls from CERT volunteers, as well as delivering food and medication and other necessities to those who are unable to get outside or are afraid to do so because of vulnerable health conditions. Next slide, please. I think this one is yours, Jen.
Yeah, so we have developed some options for Council to consider and provide us with direction on. And with that direction, we'll go back and develop programs if necessary. One option would be extension of the utility discount program. We do believe we have sufficient fund balance of just under a half million dollars that we could extend the 10% discount, discount to residents that have been laid off due, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We would require documentation from EDD that they have been in fact laid off. We would only recommend at least preliminarily extending this through the June billing cycle as we really do not have a concept of, of the impact that will make on the fund balance. We're not sure how many residents are affected by that and have been laid off. We could certainly report that back to Council and they could choose to extend the program beyond the June cycle if there was sufficient fund balance to do so. Secondly, and this will be discussed at the regular Council meeting tonight, but you would have noticed in the staff report for our master fee schedule, we had planned a rather significant second phase in of our fees to reach a cost recovery model. We are recommending to defer that second phase and at this time. And again, trying to find that equilibrium between, you know, the business and community residents, users of those fees and the needs for the city. We defaulted back to our, our typical or annual approach of just using a CPI or ENR index to raise those fees and thought that would be a fair compromise for this year at least. We have a proposed modification to the Chamber contract to help facilitate more business interaction as we, as we move through this pandemic. Deferral of our lease payments from the Thailand Trust leases and then development of a microloan program. We provided a couple of options of what that would look like specifically with the the Thailand's Trust area of businesses and the businesses outside of the Thailand's Trust. And we'll provide a little bit more detail as we go forward with that.
Yes, thank you, Jen. And so that sort of covers the, the business and community in which I think there's some more discussion when we get to the recommendation section for Council. And now we wanna kind of switch gears and look at the Rock Solid Together Plan for, for the city government and finances. As has been discussed in previous press releases and media stories, we're, we're looking at a comprehensive approach to addressing the fiscal disarray that we're experiencing at this time and trying to create a complete and balanced approach, which has four pillars that we want to discuss. The first is employee compensation, which is, has already been outlined in the discussion. That includes efforts made by the leadership team, by our management team, our Police Officers Association, SEIU. And we're still working with our fire department on, on that side. Operations, which include all the things that Jen discussed, which, you know, are outside of personnel, but include, you know, the expenses that are like contractual or, or supplies and making sure we're really tight on those. Emergency reserves, as was discussed by some of our callers, you know, there is a limited amount. It's worth three months of operations, which is a healthy fund, but this is a situation unlike any other we've experienced and we expect it to be a prolonged recovery. And so we do need reserves for multiple uses to help, help survive and thrive out of this. And then the last pillar is, is federal and state assistance and, and community outreach and discussion. We are working diligently with our federal government, especially as they consider potentially further CARES Act or CARES Act-like legislation and that local governments get consideration for the next round. Next slide, please. As, as mentioned, just fly through this, you know, we've had the, the City Council, Mayor, as well as our Planning Commissioner waiving their stipends, the State Manager and Directors. We have before Council, unrepresented management and confidential employees with a 5% salary concession to run through the end of this calendar year. Same goes for our Police Officers Association, our SEIU groups, which are our service workers and continuing conversations with the Fire Association. Next slide. Hiring chill, which is basically hiring virtually every single position that is vacant with very few exceptions. No travel outside of the county unless absolutely essential. At this time, I have not approved any travel requests. The layoffs of our part-time temporary employees, which are 70 or more employees. The concessions already discussed. And then on the, the other end of it is our non-salary expenses. So we modifying our mental marketing contract, which provides marketing services for our Tourism Business Improvement District. We modified that contract, which is discussed in this staff report so that our, our marketing firm is now only on a kind of as-needed basis, whereas before there was a retainer cost of really $12,000 a month. That is, that is being waived in its entirety and we're only using them when, when we get to a reopening phase. And right now, we're nowhere near that. So we are not marketing it at all. The Chamber contract, we are working very closely with Erica Crawford, CEO, as well as Government Affairs Committee and, and the Board to assist our local business community and by extension, kind of doing economic development on behalf of the city. And so we need to modify, recommend modifying that contract to extend some of the scope for, for Erica's work. We'll bring that back at the next Council meeting, as well as the visitor center has been closed down. So that we, we believe that, that contract has been terminated. We wanna make sure that's captured here. And Subcommittee of Council, that being Marla McPherson and Robert Davis formed a Subcommittee prior to COVID to look at the future of our visitor center, but that, they did some really good work and there, there's an attached report. But at this time, we're not recommending moving forward visitor center until we have a far more clear, far better clarity on COVID-19 situation and what tourism looks like here in Moro Bay. The City Attorney volunteered cost reductions, as was mentioned, upwards of $18,000 just for this fiscal year alone. And we're freezing all expenditures. I've asked department heads and division managers to comb over existing budget for this remainder of the, of the year and also just to really take a hard look moving into next budget year, the only budget that things are absolutely, very. And last and definitely not least, we, you know, we, we will have a gap after all those things and measures are taken. We really are looking for guidance from Council as far as what prioritization of the services that remain are so that we have guidance in developing our budget for next year. Next slide, I think is yours, Jen.
Yes, it is. Thank you. The third pillar that we referenced was emergency reserves. I know we've talked about this in the other slides, but just to reiterate, $3.4 million is our projected balance as of today. If we, this is really just one piece of the puzzle or one piece of the economic recovery picture. It's certainly not the whole solution. We know that will have some impact from KELPERS, but we're not sure what that is. We also know that it'll likely be about two years out. It's usually a two-year cycle. If we use our reserves at $1 million this year and $1 million next year without some other influx of additional revenues and/or combination of other expenditure reductions, we would optimistically end fiscal year 21 with $750,000, could be in a deficit situation of $1.4 million. Those are big, big ranges to kind of grasp and get your head around. And I understand that. Again, a big part of that is because there's so many unknowns with this pandemic and it's such an unprecedented situation where virtually overnight the economy shut down. And that's not typically how recessions work or how, how you plan for a recession. So we have lots of unknowns with this and trying to prepare for the, prepare for the, the worst and hope for the best. The fourth pillar is our state, federal and community support. The CARES Act, all of the components of that or phases of that have not applied to Moro Bay at this time. They apply to our cities and counties over 500,000 in population. So there's no direct stimulus coming from that. We, we are gonna continue to work with our congressional representatives for direct assistance to smaller cities, whether that comes in the form of perhaps post-relief or some other form. We're not sure what that would look like, but we continue to lobby for that. And also consider and provide direction on additional local revenues that we can help and have control over ourselves. So again, we're, we're phrasing this under the platform of Rock Solid Together, finding the right balance to rebuild this ecosystem where all the different components fit together as pieces of a puzzle. And without each piece, then we don't have a full puzzle to complete. So it's business support, support for our community, our families, our residents. City government provides some of that support and then the businesses or the government as to the community members and the federal state assistance. So it's really a comprehensive look at that whole picture. So the next several slides are really the items that we're looking for some conversation and direction. So the next um several slides are really the items that we're looking for some conversation and direction from council. Um, we've kind of listed each one out here. Um, so Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if you want me to keep the screen up. We did send you all the um the PowerPoint just before the meeting started. So if you need to reference that, you can, I can.
Jen, I had that in the staff report, so I, I don't think you have to keep it up. Like, we all have that.
Okay, so I'm gonna um stop sharing the screen and maybe we can go through these one-on-one, um if that's okay with you.
Actually, I'm going to open it up to general questions from council first on the presentation. And thanks for the very comprehensive, thoughtful presentation. Um, I know a lot of work went into putting everything together. I know that um, not necessarily for this remainder quarter, for this fiscal year, but for next year. Um, there are extreme number of uncertainties that we're dealing with that will be dealt with as we move forward with the uh development of the budget, budget presentation. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for council questions first, and then I will um, um in discussion, address each of the questions that you have asked in the staff report, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
If it is, then I'll do it anyway. So with that, let me uh open it up. Uh, first of all, council member Heller, um questions here.
Council member Heller?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. I think I pushed the right button. First of all, to Scott Collins and Jen Callaway, thank you so much for an incredible amount of work over, you know, when you look at the calendar, it's remarkably short timeframe. In the range of five to seven weeks, uh the world has been turned upside down and, and you've been dealt a big batch of lemons and my hat goes off to both of you and your staff for all the work that you've done in that very short period of time to come up with a remarkable picture of what is fluid and uh um, yeah, I, my hat goes off to you and I think you're going to be really challenged in the coming weeks in keeping up to date with the fluidity of the situation. Uh, a couple of quick questions, everything discussed, we can go very deep on obviously, but in the context of this meeting and the time we have, we probably won't, but could you explain to me, I understand the loss of DOT and the loss of sales tax, but can you explain to me what the gener- what generates the loss in property tax revenues?
Um, sure. There was, there's a couple of factors in play there. One of them is the transfer property tax. There's a transfer tax when properties are sold. Um, there's an expectation that that's going to decrease. So that's a little bit of delay in our um receipts this year that may or may not be tied to COVID. Um, we're still working with the county on that. That might have been a pre-existing um condition. And we do expect that the markets um, maybe sales of housing is, houses are going to go down or properties is going to slow down in the last quarter. That would also have an impact.
Okay, so that's tied to, to uh, uh, real estate market basically, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, other questions? Yeah, one of the commenters asked about KELPERS and I'm not sure that I see KELPERS in any of these equations or, or projections.
That's correct.
What are your thoughts about that?
Um, we, we did note that specifically and that is just a huge unknown. Um, KELPERS originally lost close to $70 billion when the market crashed. They gained back some um since then and have gained back even more. Um, whenever there's experiences and losses or gains, um, it's a two-year cycle to catch up typically um by the time they do the new actuarial evaluations. So we have not received any word on the impact that those losses are going to have. Um, there's some thought or speculation that that may be the federal state um relief that comes through for local cities. There's some relief on that, but we don't know that either. So part of our um discussion about being very conservative and responsible with our use of reserves is understanding there's a big component of that unknown KELPERS piece that we need to be prepared to address.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, those are my questions for this first section of the agenda. Thank you both very, very much and staff, city staff. Appreciate your work very much.
Thanks, council member Heller. Uh, council member McPherson, questions?
Uh, I do have some. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And, and thank you both for the presentation and I, I did send some questions ahead of time and I appreciate um many of them were answered in your presentation, so thank you for doing that. Just a couple of others. And I'm going to save my questions that have to do with the other, the other part of the recommendations for um possible uh additional revenues until later, if that's all right with you, Mr. Mayor? And just focus on uh what we're addressing in this part of the presentation?
Certainly.
Okay. So first question, um, are hotels and short-term vacation rentals to remain open in Morro Bay right now? So, and if so, are they restricted to who they can have in their premises?
Uh, yes, hold on, sorry. Um, great question. Uh, got, got a lot of questions about this, obviously with the an influx of um, of folks, uh, you know, both residents locally, slow county residents outside of the city and neighboring communities coming into, to the beach areas throughout the county last weekend, uh naturally some concern from residents about what this all means and seeing that, you know, hotels had people in their parking lots. Um, we had questions prior to that about vacation rentals renting the folks and definitely want to make sure it's clear that while the, the governor and the county's um shelter-at-home orders deem lodging as essential because there are places where people can house themselves. The intent of that is to, to support those are lower means um economically. For instance, the, the hotels in the county, they're providing a shelter for homeless individuals who may be experiencing COVID-like symptoms or, or actually have COVID themselves. Uh, as, as there's places of refuge for them. Um, as well as essential workers who may be here to support uh various industries uh that are deemed essential by, by again, by the governor's shelter-at-home order and confirmed by the county shelter-at-home order, as well as those who are here to help family members. And we, we certainly have to make allowances for that. And, and in reality, the rest of it, it, it shouldn't be here. You shouldn't be coming here to have fun. You shouldn't be coming here to recreate this time. And I know that's a hard message for a tourist-based economy, but in reality, um, we got to look at the long term here and um it's about preserving our public health and not about the economy right in this moment. A hard message to deliver, certainly hard message delivered to our hotel owners who are struggling, vacationers owners who are struggling and their employees. A hard message to deliver, but the, the facts are that public health is reign supreme at this time. Um, so you know, it's, it's, it's challenging because people are showing up and want places to stay, but they really should not be here. Um, so I hopefully that answers the question again. It's for essential workers. It's for those of lower income means and for those who are here to help families, not for vacation.
Are we doing any enforcement of that?
We are. The approach we've taken and, and council adopted emergency order, ordinance earlier in, in April i- is to does allow for administrative fines uh to back the shelter-at-home orders uh up to $1,000. We have not issued fines at this time because the approach for Morro Bay. Um, and the tone set by our council is, is education and voluntary compliance. And we've, we've been able to find that in many cases. Uh, actually in all cases where we, we've kind of run into the issue. Uh, people are glad to be educated. They want to do the right thing. Um, and, and when we run into issues with our large gatherings or vacation rentals or operating hotel owners, they, they want to do the right thing. So they they're, they're glad to be educated. It's, it's just all these folks you have to remember are getting overwhelmed with information themselves and aren't always able to see every email that comes in. So uh, we're trying to do our best to be understanding compassionate to those folks who are, who are just trying to make ends meet, um but, but are wanting clarity and we're providing that as much as we can, as often as we can.
And, and presumably if they have been renting hotel rooms, um, there is some minimal amount of DOT that we are collecting.
Correct. Uh, what I've heard um from, from some of the county um folks in the industry is that uh you know, we would expect that vacancies have been, or sorry, occupancy levels have been well below 50%, uh probably closer to 20 or 30% since um or lower since the shelter at, at home order went in place in mid-March.
Okay. And uh one of your proposals is to add uh to the chamber contract. Uh, do you have some sense of how much you want to add or is that something we will be seeing in the uh budget proposal and, and I assume it will be offset by the reduction in the visitor center?
I, I, I think there may be some interplay between those. That's a great question, Councilmember McPherson. Uh, ultimately, I think that the increase, a monthly increase is about uh $1,500 a month um to help support the additional scope that we've we've already sort of applied um to the chamber to help us through um the, the education of our business community well beyond just the the membership of, of the chamber. And so it's been a great partnership and council gave, sort of gave the green light uh when we had our first emergency meeting back in March to, to move forward with that. I just haven't had a chance to get it into a legal document for you all to review.
Okay. And is it possible for the city to borrow uh for the general fund from some of the other funds that we have in the city? I know we have a number of funds that have fund balances in them. Is that a possible strategy? Obviously, the emergency reserve is the first choice perhaps, but are there other ways of subsidizing on, on a loan basis from other funds?
Uh, yes, there is a li- a legal basis uh for that, um though you certainly have to make the the, the case for, for the need for it and have terms that are specified and interest payments that are documented, but that could be something that could be looked at in the future. Right now, we don't project a, a need of that. Um, we, we've certainly helped uh inversely helped the harbor fund uh from the general fund, which the harbor fund's an enterprise fund and the general fund has helped help them when they've been in the pinch in the past. So you, you definitely can do that, but at this point, we're not, we're not focused on that option.
And I know another one of your suggestions is deferring the Thailand's lease payments. Um, I'm just wondering if you have some sense of for the length of time that you would recommend doing that or is that uh, I know you asked for uh a guidance from the council, but I'm wondering if staff has a recommendation here?
Yeah, we've um, I say, I think the, the sort of the, the word on the street is that most of our lease, lease uh sites are closed almost in their entirety with the exception of a few restaurants that are doing takeout. Um, you, you know, they, they're unable to make their minimum rents and so uh I think it's sort of tied in some respects with the reopening when, when that will occur. And our understanding is the reopening only occurs when the governor, nobody else, and the governor lifts the order uh is when you can expect to see reopening regardless of what anybody else may want or want to say about that. Um, it, so we, we don't know. We don't have a, a crystal ball that tells us when that is, but we sort of are guessing and in some respects with this recommendation that perhaps it could be lifted by, by June. Um, so that's, that's why we're, we're recommending March, April, May and June at this.
And, and what did staff think about Bob Fowler's um suggestion to actually use percent of gross rent, at least for those businesses that are currently open and operating as a basis for collecting some money?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Fowler's been a, an excellent contributor to not only this discussion, but also the um the, the broader conversation that Eric Andrewsby and, and former uh interim city manager Marty Lumeli have been leading with, with other community members on the the lease policy, management policy itself. Uh, but I haven't had a, a moment to really digest what Mr. Fowler is recommending at this time. It maybe Mr. Andrewsby, our harbor director can chime in.
Sure, I'll jump in. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So, Mr. Fowler, who's the leaseholder at Morro Bay Landing down at our end of the waterfront. Uh, basically he was um recommending or proposing sort of a flip-flop of the lease structure, meaning typically we have mon- minimum monthly rents that are paid every month or semi-annually, depending on how folks want their rent structured. And at the end of the year, they pay any additional percent rent that's due. His proposal was to flip top, flip flop that around and basically go to a percent-only basis for now and don't um collect minimum rents. Meaning, you know, if somebody's not open and making no rents, like some of our retail establishments, many, most of our retail establishments. Um, they wouldn't be paying any rent right now, but once things start opening, they'd begin paying a trickle and then hopefully the trickle turns a little more of a flow. Um, when revenues begin to increase and, and it would take a little more study and structure to try and figure out how, at what point we'd get back to normal, whatever normal is, but that's um was his proposal to uh move over to percent rents, which, you know, eventually we're going to have to address the deferred rents, you know, if we're deferring for April, May, June and potentially beyond, we don't know yet. It just depends on how long this pandemic lasts and the effects continue. Um, eventually we're going to have to address what to do with the deferred rents. Um, you know, having them deferred is certainly um easing some of the pain of some of our leaseholders, but it's, it's only um deferring it. It's really putting it off inevitably. We got to address it. So um, some sort of rent structure uh that we can come up with in the meantime, maybe a way of, of um addressing it more on a, on a more permanent basis rather than just a deferral basis.
So it, it sounds like we're open to considering any and all uh alternatives and options at this point.
Oh, absolutely. I think we have to be.
Okay.
Like anything can be off the table at this point.
All right. Thank you. Th- thank you very much. Those are my questions.
And, and did you, I'm sorry, Councilmember McPherson, did you um all questions now? So if you have questions on other revenue options or anything else, please do that now.
Oh, all right.
I don't have to come, yes, thank you.
All right, all right. I will, I will.
And, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Heller as well, if you needed to come back in on any of the other issues, I, I should have said that upfront. I wanted to capture all questions upfront. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, then let me just ask you about the uh marijuana dispensaries. Um, and I'm just curious and I know someone has also asked about why they are not open yet. And I just want to know if you know the reason um why they aren't and if you could just fill us in about that.
Yeah, where, where to start? Um, the multifaceted response, I, I want to probably, probably provide a very quick overview. Mr. Graham can fill in the blanks. Um, we started the process back in 2018 while also running a number of other significant uh projects, including uh the general, general plan update and all the other things that go with that, vacation rental stuff and, and a number of other policies and programs that were also hitting in the same department, the planning department, which cannabis fell under. Um, fast forward to where we are now, we, we've gone through the permitting process, uh had to go through backgrounds and all that. And then uh we're at, at the point many months ago where we were starting to work through the building permit process and then got hit with COVID. Um, there's been clarification made that new construction is allowed, which um these the, the two permities would fall under because they have to complete renovate their storefronts to make them comply with all the very important and critical safety uh components of, of operating a, a new business like the cannabis dispensary. So we, we've been in talks with the, the two permities and um probably will be issuing building permits in the next couple of weeks to both of them and um, you know, they do have significant work to do on their facilities, but now that new construction, commercial structure is allowed to the county. Um, that would continue forward, whereas before we thought that would have to be postponed until after the order was lifted. So we expect that they will probably be open in sometime in the summer and um, you know, city council had requested that we bring back a discussion about adult use as right now, the only, only use for dispensaries is medical marijuana. Um, and we intend to bring that policy discussion back to council in May. So that if, if in fact council would like to go in that direction, it would coincide with the opening of these businesses.
All right. And, and at this point, um, are medical marijuana dispensaries considered essential services? So they could remain open? And do we know if adult recreational would also be or would they um? So I mean, would, would it even make a difference if we issued those licenses if we were able to at this point in the process?
I, I don't have a great answer. I think, I believe that at least in Grover Beach that they're, they've able, they're able to do maybe deliveries or something like that, but I, I don't know for sure. Maybe uh Chief Cox would know or maybe Scott Graham would know the answer to that.
Yeah, I'll jump in this, Chief Cox. Uh, what my understanding is, is that they have been uh classified the same as smoke shops. So if they're uh doing curbside pickup or, or delivery, they've been allowed to do that in some parts of the county.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember McPherson, um, I, I took a look earlier at whether or not cannabis is considered an essential business and at least under the governor's order, uh cannabis is considered as long as it has a state license to be an essential business. Uh, counties and cities, of course, as they have had the right since before COVID can restrict cannabis businesses further if they would like to. But the state of California has not shut down cannabis retail um pursuant to COVID.
So that applies to both adult recreational and medical?
Yes, insofar as the state has concluded that if you have a state license, um then you can dispense. And the state's not distinguishing between medical and adult use.
Okay. And do we know uh what San Luis Obispo County has done on that?
The county um The county, um, my understanding has not, uh, weighed in on whether the city should or should not, um, have their dispensaries stay open or close.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank, thank you very much. Appreciate your questions. With that, I'll move to Councilmember Davis. Any questions here?
Yes, yes, I do. Thank you. And first, of course, I need to chime in with the rest of my council members. I am overwhelmed at the great response our staff has made to both the health aspects of the crisis and the financial aspects. And I really appreciate the way that you have organized the material that you're presenting here to us today to help us make decisions. Um, I do have some questions. Um, we are proposing to defer the rent for Tylen's trust leases. And, um, I wonder, what do we think are the chances that deferred rent will be repaid in the future? Because the folks in the buildings are not making any money now. Um, and have, is that what you have considered under worst case scenario that those rents may not be repaid for, uh, for these four months?
I, I defer to, to Mr. Andrewsby. He looks like he wants to take this one.
Was that because I turned my camera on? I guess I should turn my camera on.
Exactly.
Now I'm learning. Um, like I stated previously, I think, obviously it's inevitable, we're going to have to face the deferred rents and what to do with them. Um, that many, if not most of our holders are making virtually no revenue, um, for at least a couple of months and possibly longer. I, we're going to have to face the fact that we may not see any of those rents, some of those rents back. How we set up a structure to account for it and, and, and move forward is yet to be determined. But, um, you know, right now, I think our analysis incorporated, um, at least operationally, continuing operation with deferred rents through April, May, June, you know, through the next three months. Um, and then after that, again, not knowing what's going to happen, we're going to open back up, but certainly better be, better be some commerce occurring by July, um, so that we can start getting some revenues going. Otherwise, we are gonna have to face the real prospect of some honest to goodness service cuts. Um, right now, I think we can limp along with, with extreme cuts to our budget and spending freezes, um, and maybe dipping into accumulation fund, which is our reserves and holding off on some capital projects for now. But if, if things don't start up by July, obviously not just our department, but the whole city's going to have to start looking at the prospect of, um, some bigger picture issues that may occur. So, uh, but yes, we have, to answer your question in a more succinct manner, um, at least through the end of this fiscal year, we're prepared to continue operation with those deferred rents, um, and no definitive decision on what to do with them once they're done.
Okay.
Maybe I can just, um, augment that a little bit. I think that's where maybe the microloan program could come into play. Um, and again, this is one of those fine balancing acts where the, the Harvard department has its own revenue source and has a, a smaller allotment of reserves. They deferred all their capital at this point, including the , uh, south tier, T pier and north T pier, um, capital projects that we're going to be utilizing the community benefit money. That's all been put on hold, um, and, and to the extent that it's a, anything beyond a deferral is, is going to significantly impact maybe the reserve funds in that department. So that's maybe where a loan program could come into play where it's beyond June and there's zero percent interest or something for a period of time, um, to help give those businesses a longer period to recover from this.
So in effect, that loan would simply be a transfer of the Castlewind funds to the Harbor Fund to help make up the, the loss of rental revenue. Is that correct?
And until they're repaid, and then it would go back into the community benefit fund.
Okay. And I think you also suggested using the SB 1090 fund for similar. Uh, what is the balance of that fund?
Um, so there's 215 community benefit, 250,000, and we have about, um, close to 900,000 in the SB 1090 economic development fund, but I would say 600-ish of that is uncommitted or not designated for things like wayfinding or economic implementation that's been talked to, talked or discussed with the chamber.
Okay. Um, and then I guess the same question about deferral of T O T. Um, if, if we're allowing the hotels to continue, to keep their T O T that they are gathering during these four months, um, and then we will ask them to remit that, um, was that by the end of August?
Um, it was deferral for February, March, um, and remitted by, uh, August 31st. And that would be when we have to close our books. So we could still count that in this fiscal year's revenue.
Okay. Uh, but again, there's no guarantee that we will get that money because in effect, we are allowing the lodging industries to use that money to stay alive during this period.
That's correct. So to the extent that we don't receive, um, they are having to report to us. So we would know how much, um, we didn't receive if it doesn't come in by the end of the month. And then we'd have to come back to council with another, um, conversation and how you'd want to move forward with that. Similar to the, uh, sales tax deferrals offered by the state, there's no guarantee that we're eventually going to get those as well.
Yes. Uh, but that, that's under the control of, of the state government and, and not the individuals. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, the, there's a statement that, um, will future travel look different once we begin economic recovery? Do we have any guidance from Visit Slow Cal or Visit California as to what future travel patterns will look like?
I think the early indications and, um, not sure if Jen's on here or not, but I'm sure Scott can weigh in, um, are that the, the millennial population will be likely to travel first, um, and be more likely to travel to destinations with outdoor activities where they can camp or stay in their camper vans. Um, I think Jen is on, so maybe she wants to elaborate on that.
You, you were right on, Jen. That's exactly what they're saying. And that what's going to be the last to come back, unfortunately, is the luxury traveler. So that's our, you mean their waterfront hotels, unfortunately.
Yeah. And to add to that, we, we've heard some discussion that, uh, you know, the reopening would, would include potentially the, the hotel lodging sector and that, um, for hotels specifically, potentially considering, uh, no more than 50% occupancy at any one given time to allow for social distancing and, and reduce exposure to, uh, vulnerable staff members and, and travelers, et cetera. So, um, that, that is just something I've heard and I don't know how real that is, but that, that's some of the talk around the campfire.
One of the, I think one of the major changes we'll see on the marketing side is Visit California and Slow Cal will be focusing a large majority of their funds to the drive market versus flyer international. And so we're waiting right now to hear what they're proposing. We haven't seen that yet, but we hope in the next week or so that they'll have plans. They'll start sharing so we can plan around that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I want to talk about the, uh, the vacant position that we're holding in the police department. Um, what do we think the effect of that is? And, and my concern is those instances when one of our officers on duty is required to leave the city to transport a prisoner or to take someone to the hospital for, uh, for blood testing. Um, and I'm also, um, asking about, oh, how, what will that add to overtime costs?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take, I'll take the lead and let Jody fill in some of the blanks here. Um, you know, it is, police recruitment and retention has been a significant issue for the entire nation for the last several years. And I, I want to applaud the efforts of, of our, um, police commander, our police chief, who've been extraordinary in being very resourceful and maintaining staff and as well as attracting, um, laterals and, and new folks into our, our family here at the police department in the city of Morro Bay. Um, vacancies, anytime you have to fill one, you, you're basically setting yourself back a year or more for that, especially for new, new recruits, um, who have to go through extensive training, um, and which takes that officer out of, out of duty, um, and to, to provide that training. And that, that individual is new, isn't really an effective sworn officer for, for self, for quite some time. So there's a cost to that and, and overtime is certainly a function of that. Um, and it just puts a strain overall on, on the, the folks who are providing the service. Um, before turning over to the chief, I do want to mention that, uh, we are extremely grateful for the concessions made by our employees, um, and, and in the various sectors of the city, um, while being on the front line and dealing with this pandemic and all the uncertainties and concerns, have been very courageous in performing those duties and the same time hearing a very hard message from the city manager that we need concessions. And so I, I want to express our sincere gratitude to them for, for stepping up and, and, and joining in on this, uh, this fight that we're in together. Um, so that, with that, I'll turn it over to, to Chief Cox.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Collins. Uh, yes, Councilmember Davis, uh, that, it does create an impact, uh, on, on officers, uh, just for the staffing level. Uh, currently, right now, we, we, we would prefer to have three on every shift, uh, but with the numbers that we have, you have, you typically have two to a shift more often than not. Uh, and with the number of people that require either medical clearance, uh, to be accepted for jail booking, or, or those that just may, uh, require medical clearance for some other reason, um, there is quite oftentimes that, uh, that leaves just the one officer within the city to, to handle calls for service. Um, so it is impactful that way. Uh, it also is impactful in officer fatigue and trying to, uh, fill the vacant positions with overtime as we've been doing now. Uh, as, as most of you are aware, we've, we've filled, uh, five officer positions over the past year in backfilling, trying to get back up to our allocated 18 positions. Uh, we currently lost three more this year. Uh, so, so that kind of set us back even further. Um, in, in regards to the overtime question, um, we're at about 142% of our overtime budget with the rest of this fiscal year to go. Um, and that puts us about $55,000 or so over our, our overtime budget. So it's definitely uh, an impact there. Uh, and again, the fatigue issue, because these guys are, are literally working around the clock. Um, and right now, uh, although during this COVID issue, uh, it does create the slight benefit that I'm not sending officers away to training. So when we're this shorthanded, it's very difficult to give officers time off, to give them vacation and to send them away to the required and mandated training, uh, that both post and legislation requires. Uh, so that is the, the, the one thing is I have all of the officers here. Uh, nobody's on vacation. Nobody is away at training right now during this COVID event. Uh, but it also makes it very difficult to meet those training mandates if you don't have a body to backfill that empty position when you send somebody away. So, so it does have a, a much broader impact.
Okay, thank you. And, and, uh, Scott, I'm not going to second guess your decision about whether or not to fill that vacant position because you're in the, the best position to decide that. But, but, um, these factors about having a vacancy do concern me. Uh, and then one more question, um, for you, chief. I know you answered this at the CFAC committee. Um, the status of our school resource officer and who's paying the cost of that?
Uh, the school resource officer is still assigned and working daily at the, uh, for the school district. He is currently at the high school, working every day. Uh, they pay 100% of that position. Uh, the district does. Uh, he's there working on some of the, uh, emergency protocol plans, the active shooter training, uh, remapping, uh, the, the campus layout for our Rave mobile app system, uh, and doing some of the emergency protocol stuff that he can do while the students are not in session.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and, and, uh, Scott, uh, one of the options that you presented had to do with, uh, with who, who is allowed to contact our city attorney? Um, and can you paint me a picture of that? Um, if a council member or a private citizen contacted the, uh, the city attorney with Mr. Newmeyer simply not respond and, and thereby that would kick down our costs for, uh, attorney fees?
Great, great question. We, we wanted to at least bring it up and not, not maybe have a, a, solving the, the, the issue or, or providing the policy right now, but maybe just some general thoughts and direction. I, we, we looked at this from the prism of that, uh, we're, we're locking down all of our expenses where we can and really focusing on the core essential things that we do, um, throughout the entire organization. And we are very thankful for, um, Mr. Newheimer and his, his crew, uh, N W for, um, writing down costs and, and reducing their hourly rate at this time. It's very, very helpful. We, we're very gracious for that. Um, this, this discussion is really about, well, do we want to put a little more control on, on the work that gets assigned to, to him? Um, you, you know, and just being, being mindful of that. And that also includes, you know, staff and maybe working through the city manager to approve work that he does. And then from council, uh, you know, there's sort of a policy of like, if it takes less than an hour, that's fine. It's similar to how it works for me. But if we're talking about something that's going to require a lot of research, that really should rise to the level of full city council to make the determination or the city manager, whichever the council feels more, um, comfortable with. So that's sort of the basis of it, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, it does. I, I know that I often send off an email to Chris just with a question. So that would still be okay.
Right. And it's important to note that, uh, you're asking very important questions. A lot of times we don't know. And, and so it's not like we want to cut that off. You, you wind up making a lot more mistakes than, than money saved. Uh, but it's just sort of, again, being mindful. Maybe we just, this isn't an issue we need to explore right now, or let's make sure the full city council understands the, what this issue is about before sending Chris off to, to spend a lot of time on something.
Okay. Um, under the, the fourth pillar, uh, that includes community support, we are asking for help from the federal government and from our governor. We're asking for help from the League of California Cities, from Chamber of Commerce. Um, we, the cities and the counties are the frontline soldiers in this fight. And so far, nobody is even talking about reimbursing the local governments for their costs. Um, so I'm concerned that if we continue in this direction, we may not even survive as an incorporated citizen, city. Um, and then we would lose the ability to provide essential services, fire protection, rescue services, medical, emergency-
Councilmember, is there a question?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Um, so I am not afraid to ask for help from our community and from the people who visit our community. We've talked about a sales tax augmentation. Uh, I know that right now we could not survive without our measure Q. So where are we in our conversation now about a new 1% or even a one and, one and a half percent sales tax to help our cities survive?
Yeah. Um, thank, thank you for the question. Yeah. On the federal side, we, we continue to work closely with Congressman Carbal to, um, lobby, uh, his colleagues, uh, both on the House and Senate side and the White House for, uh, some sort of relief for smaller cities. At this time, only cities of 500,000 population or more qualified for funding. Um, there's a lot more cities in America that fall well under that, that number. Um, so we, we're going to continue pressure, put pressure on that or, or, or a minimum support for, uh, infrastructure, uh, throughout the state of California if we can't get direct expenditures from, from the state or federal government. Uh, with regard to the community conversation, it's still ongoing. Um, you know, there was a poll done late last year, um, that, that demonstrated the community saw that there's a need for, for potential additional revenue, that they prioritize emergency 24 hour, seven day a week, um, emergency response, police and fire, and also maintaining cleanliness and safety in our kind of public areas like the waterfront and beach areas. Those were high, high level priorities and they saw a need and, and potential level of support for, for funding. Um, we haven't, and council hasn't made any decisions about what that would look like, um, short of just making sure that there's a conversation that goes on continually until, um, a bit later in this year after we've collected a lot more information from the community through- from the community through other surveys like we put out online as well through mail. So we're still collecting that information. We're sort of in a new phase with COVID-19. I don't think it really changes the priorities as far as I understand from our community. It's definitely still in the emergency response realm. But we want to collect that information and provide as much of that as we can to council to help inform any decisions about November. So at this time, it's still, we're still working through the engagement with the community.
All right, thank you. And you mentioned talking with Congressman Carbal. Are we stepping up our efforts to work with the League of California Cities to lobby the governor for help? And is there anything that the council can do to help?
Great question. I just saw an email from our representative for this area, the tri-county area, which we're involved in here. They call them the Channel Islands or Channel Counties, which is Santa Barbara, Ventura and San Luis Obispo. There is a call to action. You know, the governor has made the decision on his own to allow small businesses to withhold sales tax or no interest loan for 12 months, which will have a tremendous impact on cities upwards of maybe $600 million across the whole state. That's a significant amount of money. That is our money that he is loaning without our permission. We understand the need. However, we need that money to be backfilled and more. So there is a very concerted lobbying effort that's being put together. And I believe the council will be engaged and will be asked to be engaged in that effort.
All right, that's great, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Addus, questions for you?
Yeah, I have a couple here. Sorry, I need to bring them up on my computer. On the utility discount program, is it possible to also include folks that are getting the pandemic unemployment assistance? Those are people who are self-employed. I know that on the discount program, it talked about folks that could show that they're getting EDD benefits. But I just, we have so many self-employed people here. In my way, would that apply to them as well?
With council direction, we could develop the parameters over any of those scenarios as long as we had some demonstrated evidence that they were on either program for our records and to keep for audit purposes, we would be okay.
And would you need that direction tonight? Or this is something that we would say in general, we'd like you to explore expanding this, and then it would come back?
I think it could work both ways. We would, for our UDB program, we adopt a resolution to make that official. So if you gave, if council gave some parameters this evening, we could go back, develop a UDB resolution extending it with those parameters. And we could also, we also plan to put notification in the next utility insert about our utility discount program. Anyways, we would include whatever language we receive from you tonight on that, knowing that you'd be likely to approve it going forward.
So I know this is not the time for suggestions. It's the time for questions. But I just want to throw out there that I do think self-employed people, if we can get them under that program as well. We have a lot of self-employed massage therapists or, you know, very, very small business owner kind of people that I think we should be thinking about. And then there was a question about deferral of lease payments. And the question to council was that you wanted feedback on length of time. And my question back to staff on that is, is there any reason not to follow the 90 days that the governor has put in place for other rent and mortgage or eviction moratoriums? I think he's, I know ours isn't a moratorium, but I think he put in place like 90 days after the stay-at-home ends or 90 days after the crisis ends.
I think, seeing nobody else pop on, I guess I'll leave this one out. I think that we were trying to provide as much flexibility as possible, understanding that we don't really know when this is going to open up and how long it will take for the businesses to really recover and make up some of that money.
So that would be my, you know, that would be my input would be to think about what the governor has already done with those timeframes. And the same thing, those, you know, similar questions on the microloan program. Staff is asking for council to say how much funding should be allocated. And my question back was, is there any kind of recommendation from staff? Or is it just wide open? Or, and is there a way to get information from business owners about how much they actually think they need for a microloan program?
We could, so if the council was interested in that, I think our economic recovery branch would take the lead on that. And that consists of Scott Graham, Erica Crawford and Jen Little. So there would be a natural connection to the business community and maybe answer some of those questions. You can certainly, if you choose to go down the path of a microloan program, we can have broad direction and come back with those parameters. We just thought in advance of that, if there were some specific parameters the council could agree on, that might help come back with an initial round of something that would be acceptable and, you know, kind of expedite that process. Scott Collins or Scott Graham can certainly add on that.
Yeah, I would just answer that. One of the questions in there is about what's the need? The need is extravagant and far more than what we're able to do. But we want to help where we can. So it's a balancing act of making sure we don't dispense with all of our economic development funds because we use that for our chamber contract and potentially for wayfinding and other measures. But we also see that there's a need, so we want to be able to help. But we will in no way, shape or form be able to address the vast need that's evident in our business community based on the great work that has been done by Erica Crawford as well as city staff who've done direct outreach to our business community.
I was thinking, you know, Fresno started a program and theirs are $5,000. That's not, obviously, that's not the total amount of the fund. Their total fund is $750,000. I was kind of wondering though, like, do we know, do businesses, you know, would they look at that $5,000 and say like, that's not going to get me anywhere? And nobody will say that, but you know what I mean? Or would they say like, wow, if I could get $3,000, that would get me over the hump to, for us to be able to give some feedback around what size of loans? I don't know if that's the level of feedback you're looking for. And then in total amount, would we be able to say like, you know, of the money from Castle Wind, we'd like to allocate 100,000 and come back later and increase that if we felt like it was effective and we saw the need? Or are you looking for council to say, you know, give us the total amount you'd like to, we just need to allocate it now?
We don't need specifics amounts now. I think for the Tylands Trust area funded through the community benefit money, we do need to be cognizant of that that money might have to help float the harbor department if there's deferrals. So we certainly wouldn't recommend using all of that. So maybe 100,000 is a reasonable start for those businesses. For our economic development money, I think probably want some consistency and fairness, but also recognize that there's more businesses outside of the Tylands Trust. So maybe it's a little bit more of an allocation to kind of seed those programs. You know, maybe it's 150 or 200, but that could be something that Scott Graham and Erica and the city manager discuss and kind of flesh out too, if there's interest from the council.
And then is there, what would be the timeframe? And I ask about this because the kind of the challenges with the SBA loans. So if tonight council said, you know, we really want to get a microloan in place, but, you know, I would want to get it. If I, if we go that way, I would not want it to be as challenging as the SBA loans were. And I would want it to happen in a timely way so people, you know, had something to count on, basically. So what do you think, like, say council approved tonight? And I apologize if you already answered this.
I think maybe Scott Collins or Scott Graham could better address that one.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying. I think a lot of consternation in our business community was the flood of calls to SBA and others and trying to get into their portal to apply for loans and being kind of shunted out and the money running out quickly. You know, we, your same staff that is responding to the emergency and also developing the financial plans would also be the ones that would have to administer this program. So I want to be realistic about how quickly we can do it. We understand that there are times of the essence, but the need is going to be for a prolonged period of time. So we want to make sure we launch correctly and not too quickly and that we can administer it with our existing staff, understanding that there are a lot of constraints on us at this point. So I think it's an excellent question. I really can't answer it this time. But we want to balance between the urgency, but also making it something we can manage effectively because we don't want to create a program that we can't effectively sustain, if that makes sense.
No, it does. And one of the questions in the staff report for council to consider was who would administer it? And same question back to me is who does staff suggest would administer it?
Yeah, I think that was just a question I threw out there because I don't know. If we wanted, you know, maybe to consider, you know, working with the chamber or something along those lines. But we really just kind of put that in there for discussion's sake. And it may just be pointing back to me to figure it out. But we just wanted to throw that out there as a discussion.
Okay. And then I know you already talked, I know Councilmember McPherson asked a number of questions about cannabis. But it's just my main one, is there any way to tighten the timeline? And it just seems like cannabis is our biggest sort of like future hope on economic development. Is there any way to tighten up the timeline at all?
Potentially, as I mentioned there, in the process of the police chief, fire chief and planning of reviewing the final plans for building permits with some discussion left, but not much. You know, and then it's a several-month process by which to do the construction and get staffed up and all those things. In the meantime, we want to bring forward a conversation for council regarding the policy that maybe could be moved up. But we also have a large number of other items that we've got in the queue. So that's something we may be able to move that part up. But I still think regardless of what meeting we go forward in May, it's probably going to coincide with the opening. So I don't know if it'll matter if that comes to you sooner rather than later in May.
So the recreational policy could come the first meeting or maybe the second meeting?
Yes.
Okay, but the rest of that timeline are just not really.
Yeah, the rest of it is sort of, you know, I think they're incentivized fully to do their work as quickly as they can. However, you know, it's not always easy to find construction workers at this time. So that's going to be a challenge potentially for them. And maybe Scott has a better idea of that. But I know they're certainly fully incentivized to do that as efficiently as possible.
Okay, and then on the other options, parking, lease of property, RV camping? It seems like we've circled around these a number of times. And council, like, I think it's council has always said no, not to move forward on these. So, but they're back again. And I'm wondering about the timing and if we really, if staff really sees them as a way to address the economic issues of COVID. It sounds like the parking program, not so much about economics.
Yeah.
Lease and RV maybe about economics?
Yeah, the paid parking is more of a, more global than just revenue. Of course, revenue is part of it. It's really about the sort of addressing parking behavior or economics. You know, where you have store owners or store employees parking in front of their own businesses to their own detriment. And the way you correct that behavior is through charging for parking and using market-based incentives to encourage people that they're going to, they're rarely there to peruse, they're going to park further away and take a long stroll. If you're really, only one business to go to, you're going to pay more to park right in front of that business and there's a higher turnover rate. So it's really around economics. But in order to do that, you have to charge it for it. And that pays for the infrastructure and that pays for the parking enforcement, for lack of a better term. So a lot of ways, it sort of just funds itself. And there are cases where you can use those revenues to improve the parking infrastructure and adjacent infrastructure, like the streets and the sidewalks. So that could work to our benefit down in the harbor area. But it is a very heavy lift to move that through the coastal commission. You have to do a fair amount of studying and figure out, you know, how is that going to affect coastal access? So there are a lot of strings to pull from that. The RV camping program seems to align with what Ms. Little had said, that we may see folks who are seeking alternative lodging when the lift is, order is lifted. And this may be an opportunity to try something on a pilot basis, you know, and work with the coastal commission to understand this is something we're trying and it's low-cost accommodations, which is very much in line with their policies that they're pursuing at this time. So that one might actually be able to render revenue for our harbor fund, which is in great need. And we have staff who are thinking of this in the harbor department, who really have been talking about this for quite some time. And we understand there's reluctance around putting kind of camping in sacred places like the Rock or other parts of the waterfront. But it could be one of those opportunities to try something different and new.
And if I remember correctly, it's not that many RV camping spaces. It's not like the whole parking lot becomes RV. It seemed like it was a somewhat small amount of, or small number.
Yeah, we haven't dialed out the specifics. We just wanted to test council and see if there's any interest before going off and really putting a program together. But we would expect it to be in the 10 to 15 base range. And maybe allow four tents as well. But it would be a confined space. It wouldn't, it wouldn't just sort of be all over the place. It'd be in a contained area where it's clearly specified that this is allowed and the other areas are allowed in the Rock, so they wouldn't be overwhelmed. And maybe some other spots in the waterfront area. We'd be very strategic about it and very much approaching this as a pilot basis.
And then on the, the parking, if one of the purposes is to get the turnover, like, what's the timeframe on that, given that we are sort of messaging for people not to come here right now? Like, how would that line up with, you know?
Yeah, to be frank, a parking program to sort of encompass the entire waterfront is a, it's a, I would treat it as a campaign, like a one- to two-year deal to do the analysis, to find vendors who could provide the infrastructure and/or the enforcement services, don't really understand the choices, to do a lot of community outreach to the business community as well as our residents and the travel industry. So it's not something we could just turn on overnight. It's an extensive amount of work and it would certainly have to rise to a level of a priority for us to move on it effectively. Because it's going to require Public Works, myself, finance, planning, you know, business community, our residents to really figure out what's going to work best for us.
And then on the lease of property, kind of same question. What do you see the timing with right now? It seems like I've heard a lot of varying things about sale and lease of property. I know earlier Jen said that there may not be as much, you know, as many home sales, which I think is different from this property. But I've heard other people say sales are pretty consistent. So how does that look, given the coronavirus crisis right now compared to the properties we'd be looking at and the timing?
Good question. I might defer to Jen on just what's going on in the market. But we know, I believe we have several folks who are interested. And if we're talking about the rental that's around the corner from City Hall, there is interest in renting that out at market rate. And that money would be used, has typically been used to support consolidated maintenance projects. So that is sort of a replenishing fund. We've had some issues with getting some work done to bring that house up to, you know, not cove, but just presentable. There was, it was just a lot, it's an older building. So it needed some inexpensive, but it was hard to get the labor to do the work to make the improvements that were needed. But we're at the point now where we're prepared to be able to lease it. But certainly council could consider a sale of the property, which, you know, it's sort of, you know, do you want more over the long term to release? Or do you want quick money? And maybe a sale would render that.
Thank you. I think that's all my questions.
As always, excellent questions. And I had a chance to talk with Jen and Scott both. So I will not, I do not have additional questions at this time. I'm going to move to discussion and I'm going to go ahead and lead off. What I'm going to try What I'm going to try to do in the interest of time is to give full consideration to this and maybe some of the bigger issues that are of concern we might bring back for further discussion. This is an extremely significant economic disaster that has been precipitated rather quickly. We all know with great uncertainty with regard to the potential for recovery. The complicating factors are the lack of federal and state funding promises to localities like ours, which are significant. There's no guarantee that we're going to be reimbursed for any lost revenues whatsoever. There is significant uncertainty with regard to the reopening of businesses, not only across the state, but also within San Luis Obispo County. Unfortunately or fortunately, Morro Bay is a single engine economy that is tourism. And over 70% of our revenues are derived from that. And that at present is shut down and that has magnified the effect here. Add to that the unknown CalPERS impact, which has been discussed in some detail. Not understanding what the economic losses might be from investment return losses for CalPERS is daunting at best. And also the need for us to consider the balancing of not only the economic condition of the city, but the economic viability of our businesses and how to best assist those are what I consider to be the conundrum issues that we're facing. On the positive side, I will suggest that our reserves at $3.4 million are significant compared to the majority of cities across the country. The average is about 16% of general fund revenues. We had a policy that was put in place a number of years ago that mandated a minimum of 25%. And this is the reason and this is the time for that kind of decision. And I'm glad that we did that. However, we must limit, in my opinion, the depletion of the general fund reserve, especially when you consider next year's budget and the potential worst case scenario that indicates a total utilization of all reserve funds and a possibility of a deficit thereafter. The other positives I would cite are our great staff. We have, I think, a very capable staff who reacted very quickly to the situation. They have been putting in significant time without a doubt and have come up in my mind with some excellent recommendations for how to help mitigate this huge issue. And also I want to thank our staff that have given concessions, not only our management staff, our directors, the council, our planning commissioners, but as well as the SEIU and the POA. Thank you so much for your concessions and considerations. It goes a long way in these difficult times and we greatly appreciate that. I'm going to move to two different recommendations. The first would be if you want to refer to page two of the staff report. We have six recommendations for adoption of resolutions, excuse me, five for adoption of resolutions. And then one discussion item, I'm going to divide my motion into two pieces. The first motion will be to adopt resolution number 37-20 to adopt a 5% salary reduction for unrepresented confidential and unrepresented management designated employees. And two, adopt resolution 38-20 to adopt amendment number one. The memorandum of agreement between the City of Morro Bay and Morro Bay Police Officers Association adopting a 5% salary reduction. And three, adopting resolution 39-20 to defer Tideland Trust lease site rent payments to the city for the months of March, April, May, and June of 2020. And four, authorize the city manager to execute amendment number two to the contract with Mental Marketing Incorporated. And number five, adopt resolution number 40-20 to adopt amendment number one to the memorandum of agreement between the City of Morro Bay and the Service Employees International Union adopting a 5% salary reduction. So motion by Mayor Hennings, second by council member Addis. And I will open it up if there's any discussion on those items.
I just want to thank our employee units as well. I know this is a hard discussion and I know these are incredibly hard times. And it's absolutely not anything that we would want to ask in other times. And so I'm incredibly grateful to the bargaining units for working together. And I think it really displays the kind of people that work and live and play in Morro Bay.
Thank you, council member. Any other comments or discussion?
I would like, I would like to also add my thank you to our employees. We are so grateful for their stepping up and willing to help out in this difficult time. And also to the chamber members for what they're doing and to really our whole community. So we are in this together.
Thank you, council member. Other comments?
Red, you want to go ahead?
I just want to echo my fellow council members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll chime in here. No question, the salary reductions that have been made by the different employee groups is very much appreciated. And it's a real sign of your commitment to the survival of the city as an independent city, which I think the vast majority of people who live here want to do. I have a problem with the Tideland Trust lease rent payment deferral. I really think it needs more consideration and discussion. I would like to see all tenants and the trust lease properties pay their percentage, as suggested by Bob Fowler, of whatever that may be. I think that everyone has to understand that the city is bending over backwards to help businesses. On the other hand, the businesses need to help the city to the extent that they can. And I think a blanket deferral is an inappropriate thing for us to approve. Regarding the executing amendment to the Mental Marketing Group, you know, I recognize and appreciate they're suspending their $12,000 a month retainer. But frankly, I think we need to take more time and really take a look at this contract in general and see if we need these services or how much do we need of the contract that is currently in place. In general, and I'm just going to say this right now in case we run out of time. I think this agenda is very dense. I think there's an enormous amount of information that the public needs to be able to comment on. And I think there's a lot of detail and discussion that we're not going to have time for this afternoon that needs to take place. And probably the most important piece that concerns me, if we're planning for the worst and hoping for the best, there's nothing here that addresses what happens if we fail. Now, I don't intend to fail. I don't think we will fail. But what is the downside if this, if we no longer become an independent city? I think we owe that to the people who live here to know what that might look like, what the consequences of that might be or not be. And I think that will speak and inform to all the decisions that we make over the coming months. I think it's important that that is on the table. It's the elephant in the room. It needs to be in place. As far as providing direction to staff on all of the recommendations, I think.
I filled out on that one.
That's not part of the motion, right?
Correct. You're right. I was going to say that as a secondary motion.
Thank you for that clarification.
You've been.
That's all I have to say on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just maybe respond why I made the motion. One, we appreciate, we do want the concessions from the employee groups and that's the majority of the recommendation. Two, with regard to mental marketing, for them to cede and allow us to be out of basically, as I recall, a majority, if not all, of the marketing expenses on a monthly basis. It would be ludicrous in my mind not to accept that and take that out and not incur that expense and reevaluate that at a later date. And with regard to the, let's see, the Tideland's trust lease issue, I appreciate your comments regarding Mr. Fowler's recommendation. I think for myself, that needed a bit more study. I don't know the actual cost ramifications or impact. I can wrap my head around the Tideland's trust lease deferrals. And this is just a deferral, not a forgiveness at this time. So with that, I will remain with my motion. And if there's no other comments, ask for a roll call.
Mayor Hennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you. And then with regard to page two of the agenda, item number five, providing direction to staff. I absolutely agree with customer retailer. This is a tremendous amount of information, even for us to wrap our heads around, who are in the middle of this issue almost on a daily basis. However, I'll just give you my sense with regard to general guidance to staff. These are not absolute recommendations, but I'd like to see them come back, councilmember Heller, and have them discuss. But these are the parameters I think I would be comfortable with. So, so I don't know if I need to, I'm not going to make a motion, but I'm just going to give my input and then ask others to piggyback on that input. If you look at page 11 of the agenda, word speaks to business and community. And that actually refers back to page six. So if you start on page 11, that begins the discussion items that council asks for. But I'll refer to page six. Number one on the top of page six, I do support the utility discount program. And I do concur with councilmember Addis and her recommendations to include the self-employed. With regard to, number two, that will be discussed at the council meeting this evening. I will defer that discussion until the council meeting. With regard to number three, I do approve of the chamber contract modification being brought back for consideration because of the need for significant business outreach. Number four, we talked about. Number five, I do support the micro loan program. If you look at page seven, with regard to the parameters, my suggestion would be that for the micro loan program, grant program, we not exceed $100,000 of the Castle Wind Fund and we not exceed $200,000 of the SB 1090 fund. And I would leave it up to staff to bring back considerations as outlined on page seven with regard to general parameters for how that program would work. That would be not a forgiveness, but that would be a deferred payment program based upon the parameters that staff brought back and how they determine it should be administered. If you turn to page eight, with regard to the emergency reserves, I do agree that for the remainder of the fiscal year, we're going to have to tap into emergency reserves up to a total of $1 million. And I would not feel comfortable exceeding that for this year, given the magnitude of considerations for next year. Back to page 11, sorry to move around, but I'm trying to cover everything. The, with regard to city government, we covered item number one, employee compensation. With regard to operations, I support the city manager being a gatekeeper for city staff utilizing the city attorney. But the city attorney is the employee of the city council. And thusly I would want to ensure that there were access of the council services to council members. With regard to reserves, I talked about that. I would not exceed for the remainder of this year $1 million. With regard to number four, I obviously support ongoing federal and community advocacy for federal and state support. We are working with League of Cities to write a number of letters. There were weekly calls with the league representative in our area. You've seen a flurry of letters, I believe that went out on email today. You'll see another flurry of letters going out to the governor that will come towards the end of the week. And then with regard to, let's see, paid parking. I believe right now it's too labor intensive. It would take too much staff time to try to develop that program. My personal opinion is we should consider that in the future, but defer that for now. I do support looking at the sale or lease of property, specifically with regard to the following properties on page number 13. The 460 Benita Street Fire Station, the Teen Center on Atascadero Road, 570 Dune Street, and any others that council may consider appropriate for consideration. I think RV parking is intriguing, although I think it brings significant dollars to the city. However, it may accommodate a number of millennial travelers that will return to the city and spend money. So I would support looking at that on a limited basis. And I would suggest that staff move as quickly as possible forward with not only us agendizing adult-use cannabis, but also getting these two dispensaries permitted. That is a huge revenue opportunity that we must pursue immediately. Thank you. I'll stop there and ask for other input and/or recommendations regarding the questions that staff had. Councilmember Addis?
Yes, I'll go down my list similar to what you just did. I'm a yes on the utility discount program and want to make, want to see self-employed people included in that. Yes to deferring the phase in of the fees. Yes on the increased chamber contract. Yes on deferral of lease payments. And I think I stated my input already about following the governor's lead with the deferral until 90 days after the COVID crisis ends, so that we have some consistency. And maybe looking at it again then if we have to, you know, take another look. I would say yes to the micro loan program. If we can have processes that are going to be streamlined and that, that folks are actually going to be able to apply and we're going to be able to follow through with that. I like the suggestion of no more than $100,000 from the Castle Wind Fund and no more than $200,000 from SB 1090. So I would agree with the mayor's recommendation on that. And then yes to continued advocacy for economic relief. I'm a little concerned with the process for public input that was used for the letter from the Assemblymen and the letter from the county supervisors that was released today. And so I hope that our advocacy can really be pinpointed at economic recovery and leave reopening to the medical experts, Dr. Borenstein. I would say yes to limiting using more than $1 million of the reserves. I really would like to see us do everything we can to fast track and streamline the cannabis, because I think it's our next best opportunity for economic development. And I would like to see us get moving on exploring parking as well as RV camping. Each time parking has come before us, we've kind of pushed it down the road. And I'm not totally clear on how it's going to help us to keep doing that. So I'd like to see us move forward on that as well. I think that's it for me.
Thank you so much for your input. Councilmember McPherson?
Yes, thank you. I agree. I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor, first before I make my remarks. When you talk about the micro loan program, would you consider deferring the lease payments, a loan program, which is in essence what we're doing and delaying TOT repayment? Would that constitute part of a loan program where we are essentially allowing that to happen at no interest?
Yeah, yes, I'd support that.
Yeah, okay. As long as, as long as that would be considered a part of the program, then I would concur with everything that the mayor has said. I agree with you totally on every point you made. So I was listening carefully. And I would suggest also that you might want to look at the Market Avenue property, which is, I understand it, is that little red building in the parking lot. And that's another one that we could, I think, very quickly lease out. So I would add that to your list of properties that we would like the staff to look at. And I obviously agree on moving forward quickly on the marijuana.
Great, thank you. And councilmember Heller? Councilmember Heller? Comments? He looks like he's pushing.
I'm not done, sorry.
Oh, there you go.
Still struggling with the right button. Sorry about that. For the record, I think this meeting needs to be continued, perhaps Thursday night this week, where the public can comment thoroughly and we can have a more in-depth discussion of what is a very important agenda. of what is a very important agenda. As far as the recommendations go, I will make brief comments, but I do want also for the record to note that we don't have time apparently to talk about the four pillars, which I think is very well constructed and needs to be discussed in some detail. Regarding utility discount program, I don't believe that 10% discount is going to make a big difference to a lot of people. I also assume that there's a cost associated with expanding the program. I think the program as it stands should be supported and continued. The master fee schedule, this is an enormous opportunity, I think, for the city to look at fees.
That's on the agenda. Jeff, I was just going to say that's on the agenda for the council meeting. I would just postpone any discussion until then. Is that okay? Thank you, sir.
Well, I'd be surprised, any discussion of this, we should wait until that meeting apparently. I don't know if you can talk about one without talking about the other part of it. As far as, I'm opposed to deferring fees effective July 1. I'm opposed to implementing what's proposed here in number two. Number four, I'm opposed to deferral all payments as we discussed a moment ago. Number five, I'm opposed to micro loan payments specifically with respect to the $250,000 from Castle Wind. I think those funds need to be preserved for essential services, primarily police and other, other things that are more important. That's it.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Davis, sir?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to agree with all of your recommendations, Mayor. And as regards to the paid parking, I agree with Dawn that this is something that needs to be looked at, but I, I just think now is not the right time. It is not a revenue producer and it will require an enormous amount of staff time to do the research and I, I just don't want to spend staff time on that right now because it's not going to produce revenue. That's it for me.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Heller, thank you. I absolutely agree with bringing back a number of these items for, very quickly for further consideration and with regards to times. And I'll make sure that we agendize that and get that to happen. Lastly, I would say that I believe that staff needs to dig deeper. I still have concerns about the uncertainty that's out there and I believe that with regard to operational expenses and labor, we need to even look more closely at that and look for more potential savings. With that, I want to make sure that staff is clear with everything that we tried to outline, got all of the inputs and feels comfortable, or do you have any questions? Scott or Jen?
I think we're taking good notes. Jen, did you have any clarification or Dana?
I would just clarify that for the UDP program, it sounds like maybe there's some, there's not consensus necessarily on that, so we shouldn't advertise expansion of that at this point or was there a consensus?
Yes, I believe we had consensus except for council member Heller.
Okay. And then also just, I guess I would just add as more of a comment that I appreciate you recognizing the employee groups and the leadership of POA and SEIU and the management group been moving forward with those salary concessions. Those go a long ways, given that we have such a short period of time to make up a significant gap.
Well, again, thank you, staff, for your time, all of your efforts. Thank you, AGP, for your work. With that, I will adjourn this meeting. We'll reconvene at 5:30 PM this evening via teleconference for a regular city council meeting. Thank you and good evening.